The meeting is called back to order at 7:00 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion in a second that the agenda of December 10th, 2019 be approved as submitted? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't realize Bart wasn't at the table, but...
She's coming back.
Okay.
She's gonna introduce the concert.
Oh, very good. Okay, thank you. All right, may I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda to include approval of minutes of November 19th, 2019 as submitted, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, request to approve the recommended bidder as stated on the agenda, and approval of requests to dispose of unserviceable textbooks. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Treasurer's report. May I have a motion in a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending September 30th, 2019, be approved? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right, special reports.
We have two special reports this evening. First, we've got Mrs. Marty Morrow, our Medicaid Coordinator, who is gonna give our annual Medicaid Compliance Plan recertification. And I'll turn it over to Marty.
Hello. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'm just gonna take a few minutes to review our Medicaid process. So this is the program that is used for accessing student insurance benefits for Medicaid services for students with disabilities.
Is your microphone on?
Is your mic on? Is it the red light? Does the light come hanging out? Just pull closer if you can. I can't hear you. I think it's time. I think we're having some technical difficulties there. Maybe try the other one. Should I just speak up a little louder?
Is it there?
I don't know, I think Jasmine is there. Okay, let's just take a minute and see if she can address that.
There we go. Sounds better? Yes.
Yeah.
So, thank you for having me here tonight, just to review our Medicaid process in Penfield. We have to do this annually, just to make sure that any new items are discussed. So, this is the service program that is used to access money for students with disabilities who are Medicaid eligible and have Medicaid eligible services. And the committee that we have internally in Penfield consists of Barbara Gregory, our compliance officer, Scott Dreschler, our CSE Chair, Bill Maloney, our treasurer, and myself. We meet a few times a year to review the Medicaid alerts that come up, the best practices, and to review our compliance plan, which, you know, just has to be brought up to date. And there's also regional meetings at our BOSIs that discuss updates and such, so we go to those meetings as well. If you have any concern about any waste, fraud, or abuse, you may contact Barbara Gregory or the Medicaid Inspector General, and they will be able to address those concerns. So, the services that are covered under Medicaid are listed on the slide. We bill for the top three. Most of them are, the billing process is designed more for a doctor's office style. So, in the school district, the three that we bill for are the ones that are least disruptive to our educational environment. The first item being parental consents. We have a one-time consent needed by parents to be able to bill their child's insurance benefit. And if we can't obtain that, we can't bill for those services. So, we've actually gotten the process narrowed down so that, for the most part, it's new referrals and students who transfer into our district that we have to try to obtain that consent for. The providers, especially our speech pathologists, those are the staff that are in district employees. And we have to apply for Oprah enrollment for them. And so what that does is it just is a matter of application, more or less, that assures that they are certified licensed therapists. The providers all have to have certified licensed, have to be certified licensed therapists, and they have to have an MPI number, which is a National Provider Identification Number in the directory. If they aren't licensed and registered, then they have to work under a licensed provider. So, there's this whole process around, under the direction of a therapist. The listed people would need to follow those guidelines as well. In Penfield, all our service providers are licensed and certified, so we don't have to go through that process of, under the direction of. So, the National Provider Identification System is really a directory of therapists. And it's a standardized system that's used for HIPAA transactions as well. So, it just gives us a means of looking up who is registered and licensed. There's also exclusion lists, both state and federal, and that helps us to identify anyone who should not be working with our students. We look those people up in these lists when we hire someone, when we have a new provider. That gives us the ability to determine who we should not utilize as a service provider and also who we cannot bill for. These are all the different requirements around Medicaid claims. We have to have a student who's eligible, who has, is a student with a disability. We have to have parental consent. They have to be a qualified provider. As you can see, you can see all the items listed. That's the basic list. And the last item is really more about a cost reporting process that we have to do annually that includes random moments. And that is something that our providers in district have to respond to an outreach email from the state that says, "What are you doing at this moment in time?" And they have 48 hours to respond to that. Our providers respond. We've got 100% participation, so they're great. Frontline Education, which used to be IP Direct, is our service provider. And they have, that system has allowed us to streamline our process. All the BOSIs and out-of-district placement agencies that we use, use that system. So, it's become very efficient. They also, effective this year, have a student eligibility lookup process with the state. They finally kind of got that piece put together. So, that keeps us up to date with which students are eligible. And also, the one-time parental consent that we get, we've tweaked that to the point where we're minimizing the effort needed to obtain that. Like I mentioned earlier, the cost report is an annual report that we have to fill out, and we have to give them account of all students who receive Medicaid eligible services. We have to provide them lists of staff on the payroll that provide these services and the benefits that they receive. We have to provide lists of all providers for out-of-district placement. And we also have to include administrative costs for those services. This year, in September, was the first year that the state distributed any funds for that cost reporting process. Just to give you an idea, the school districts across New York State received 13% of the total bucket that New York State received from the federal government. It's not a big pot of money there. That's about it. Does anybody have any questions? Board members, any questions or comments? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Thanks, Marty. The second special report this evening is the annual Penfield High School Course Selection Guide for, believe it or not, 2020 to 2021. So, we have Dr. Leslie Maloney, our principal, and Mrs. Lisa Henry, our English Department Chair.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. It's hard to believe, and I'm gonna apologize for my voice. I remember people saying that when you have a little one, there's, they get a lot of illness at daycare. I didn't realize that applies to the parents as well. I am learning the hard way. So, as I was preparing for this report, this is the 14th course guide that I have worked on. And it, there's just so much to be proud of, but I'll share a little story with you. My very first day at Penfield High School, when I was hired as the math department chair, when I got home from work, my mom called, "How did the first day go?" And my mom still tells this story. I said, "I wish I could've gone to high school there. They have so many choices for students, so many courses to choose from." And, you know, as I prepared this report, I thought, "Wow, that still rings true 14 years later." And I think it's been so fascinating to me, for me, to see how we have evolved over those 14 years. And Liz Smith, who's the department chair for Social Studies, she always says that the students vote with their feet. And you'll see some of the changes that we've made this year based on student requests and feedback from the kids. So, as you know, the course guide features all of our academic departments as well as the courses that are offered at EMCC. And as you well know, our course offerings are dependent upon the enrollment and the budgetary staffing constraints. And then this slide has transitioned, I think, the 14 years as well. You know, the first bullet talks about that well-rounded course guide and the offerings that we have. And the second bullet talks about how we differentiated the high school through honors, our AP courses, our dual-credit courses. And the piece about PHS that I take so much pride in, and we say this when we meet with eighth graders, you really get to determine your own path. You really get to select your, I remember as a kid reading those Choose Your Own Adventure books, you really, coming to PHS, you get to choose your own adventure in terms of the courses. And when students are struggling, we have lots of support. Our DICs, our Academic Success Center, after-school time with teachers, reading intervention courses, our extended courses. Lots of opportunity for kids to get extra help. And if you'll recall, three years ago, we revised the course guide, took a whole new, turned it inside out and upside down, and started using a piece of student artwork as the cover. And so this year's student artwork is from Megan Solano, from the class of 2020. It was originally a colored pencil drawing, and it was changed to black and white for the course guide. A shout-out to Ann Punzy, our Department Chair for Art. She always helps us in terms of making the artwork fit perfectly on the cover. So, some points of interest. You'll probably remember, three years ago, when we turned the guide inside out and upside down, we took a look at some of the other districts, their course guides. And particularly, the business department, they were really struggling with, you know, we have courses that we, they aren't full each year, and then we end up not being able to run them. How could we maximize our staffing as well as the courses? And so, we started an alternate year with courses in business, art, and technology. And we've seen a lot of success. Now, the courses are full. And Jamie Murna, the business department chair, and I just had a conversation about this the other day, and she said, "It's really nice to have a full class as opposed to a class of, you know, 16 or 17." And we've really seen that. The reason that the English department, that those courses are highlighted yellow, we, English, these are the English electives, that we've decided to try this as well. We've seen the same thing happen with these four courses, in terms of their numbers. And so, we're gonna try alternating them. So, you'll see that collaborative theater and Shakespeare, they will alternate. And then, mosaics and science fiction will alternate. So, we're gonna try that. And our AP courses for each of the subject areas, as well as our dual-credit options, are on pages eight through 10. As you know, we have dual-credit partnerships with Monroe Community College, Syracuse University, and RIT. So, our new courses, pending your approval, you'll see, you'll see a common theme here. I think the piece that I really like, each of these courses speaks to the district's priority of social-emotional learning. So, I think for the six years that I've been principal, the students have been requesting yoga. And we've been able to make some shifts in terms of staffing so that we'll be able to offer yoga as one of the PE electives that students, that juniors and seniors get to take. And then, I'm going to let Lisa talk about the other three courses, as they are English electives, and they're very exciting.
We are very excited about our new electives. When we took a look at the catalog, some of the courses have been offered for years and years and years. And in the course like Shakespeare, that's fabulous. However, some of the people who taught some of these electives have actually retired, or they've left. And we didn't have teachers who were as passionate about the specific kinds of topics. And as you know, if you have a passionate teacher, you have passionate students who are excited to learn. So, some of our newer, and yes, they're younger, faculty are excited to finally design an elective that they're going to be hopefully allowed to teach. And you can see Survey of Poetry and Literary Yoga will be offered to 10th and 11th grade students as an elective, but it will also cover seniors as an English one-half credit, a semester-long course for their English credit. Survey of Poetry, we're very excited about. It will be covering things like, is rap poetry? Spoken-word poetry? Really reaching out and dealing with what kids listen to in music every day and analyzing the poetry, as well as helping students make that transition to more traditional poetry. We're very excited, and even though it's poetry, we're really hopeful that it will run. Music is literature is another exciting elective that we've been talking with the music department and collaborating about the connections, especially in humanities, with music and literature. You know how passionate students are about music. We have a wonderful music program here. We already have heard a lot of buzz about this elective. And Literary Yoga is, we are actively trying to help with the social-emotional learning of our students. And this is an exciting way to combine research, writing, and reading with actually understanding how you can use something like yoga to help with your own emotional health and well-being. So, just like Leslie said, I actually want to take all of these classes. But we're very excited and hopeful to be able to run these. We did eliminate some classes this year that haven't been, haven't had students excited about them. Modern Literature, Humanities, were a couple of the courses that we're not going to run this year to try to see how we can do with some new exciting courses.
And some of the courses, we found, were actually bumping into courses or electives in the other departments. So, for example, Film Production. Often, students would be torn between taking Film Production or the Studio in Media Arts, their film production course. So, rather than have that rub, the English department said, "Let's redesign our electives so that kids can choose to take both," hopefully, moving forward. So, the next slide, I want to say, a little over a year ago, Lisa and some of the teachers in the English department approached me regarding this idea that they had. So, we've had lots of conversations, I know we've talked here with me at the table, around the feedback that we heard during the community listening sessions. And students and parents were very concerned about students, the pressures that students feel around academics, as well as that transition to the high school. And as a building, we've been talking about, how can we help students, how can we take some things off of their plates so that, to eliminate some of that stress? So, and as a result, the district has since begun putting social-emotional learning as the priority. So, previously, students could elect to take English IX Regents or English IX Honors. And the pilot for next year, what we'd like to do is have all students take English IX Regents with a writing lab. And that, what that's gonna allow is for some, in fact, I woke up in the middle of the night last night with an idea of what we could do with the, with the writing lab and how we could schedule it to really allow students to receive that individualized instruction. And the goal is to standardize the rigor for all students while also allowing that opportunity for differentiation. So, as Lisa shared, for English, my secretary, Sherri Smith, made this table. And it really helps to show how, so if you look at the first row, in grade nine, all students will take English IX with that extra writing lab period. English X, students will choose English X Regents or English X Honors. In grade 11, that's the year of the Regents exam. So, students can choose to take English XI Regents with that extra lab period to help prep for the Regents exam, or AP Language. And then, as a senior, students choose between AP Literature or two electives. And then, you'll see the electives, the bottom rows there. The electives that are in the first, the middle row there, students can choose to take, in addition, in their 10th and 11th grade years, to the English course that they choose. Or they can choose from those courses in their senior year. So, a lot of options for students in terms of, and that's that piece where it's, again, choose your own adventure at PHS. I think it would be very hard for me to choose my own adventure because, like Lisa said, all of the courses, there's just, there's something about each of them that makes you want to take them. So, our scheduling process, right now, we're in the midst of Teacher Advisory Week. The teacher portal is open, and teachers are making recommendations, having conversations with students about what they recommend the students take next year. And then, over the break, the student portal opens, and students can sit down with their parents and go in and make their requests. Students will, students in grades nine, 10, and 11 will meet with their counselors during seminars, have one-on-one conversations regarding courses that they'll take. And over the Regents Week in January, the counselors will go over and meet with the eighth-grade students. So, they still have that one-on-one time to talk with a counselor. Third-quarter review of recommendations, just, that happens at the end of the third quarter so that teachers, if there's any, you know, glaring changes or any recommendations that need to be modified, those come in then. And prior to the end of the year, a letter is sent home to parents and students with the courses that they have selected. And over the summer, there's one opportunity, well, we say it's their last opportunity to make changes, but we're still making changes, and it's the 15-week mark. But we lock Infinite Campus so that we can really build that master schedule. And then, as you will recall, we have that limited drop add the first two weeks of school, so that really helps keep the movement from throwing the whole kit and caboodle off. And we hold tight to that, unless a student is missing a course for graduation, or they'd like to increase the level of rigor, possibly they'd like to take, they'd like to go from Regents to Honors, or if they'd like to pick up an additional class. So, that is the 2021, if you can believe it, course guide in a nutshell.
It is hard to believe. Before I ask board members for any questions or comments, I want to be the first one to say, I think that picture is really cool on the cover.
Isn't it?
Yes, it's beautiful. I think it's really well-done, and it, you know, looking to the future and all.
With the 2020, I thought that was...
Very clever, and it's beautiful. Board members, any questions or comments? Yes, Calvin.
Is this on? Okay. Good. What I encountered this year that I thought would be useful for my own son was the ability to take some more shop classes, because he's basically all thumbs. He's a pretty good student, I think, but that's really not available too much anymore. And I don't expect you to change it immediately, but I found it very useful in my own career as an engineer, the courses that I took here at Penfield. So, we tried to duplicate that, and he would have to go over to BOSIs. That really doesn't work out very well for him. So, those are my thoughts. I think that's an area for, maybe it doesn't work in this building any longer, but it sure was a very useful thing at the time, and it still is for people who want to pursue engineering or any of those. It's useful in many areas.
Yeah, actually, on Friday, EMCC has their, has their tour. Their, their programs are open for all to come and visit. And actually, Lovey and I were just talking about this before the meeting in terms of, how do we provide students with more opportunity to experience those courses, both here and at EMCC, so that they can make that, that decision prior to becoming juniors or seniors where they're locked in and have to be here at PHS? But I couldn't agree with you more. We do have some, some ideas on the back burner that we're working on. I don't want to give them all away, but hopefully, next year, I'll be here presenting on a new course that combines geometry and technology. So, I'll leave you on the edge of your seat until...
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mark.
I just want to say, we just had a conversation at home, I think, last night, about the English and the combinations. So, it's, it's, it will be interesting to see how it works out. So, I guess I'd say the question is, when they're, with the extra lab, that's, that's one day per cycle, correct? Is it, is it a study hall in the other days per cycle, or what happens on those other days?
Oh, no, no, no. We would run it opposite, possibly, PE or opposite their science lab. So, it would replace potentially, it could replace a study hall, but it also could be, it wouldn't replace a lab, but it would be, so if one day they go to lab, the next day they might go to a science lab, then they might go to writing lab, then they might have PE.
Got it. Got it. All right, thank you.
Dr. Putnam?
Yeah, there's some more board questions.
Oh, any other board questions or comments? All right.
I just want to say, thank you to Lisa and Leslie for putting, you know, this presentation together, and also just to Dr. Rudes and Mrs. Williamson in the back there, who I'm guessing are here too to lend some moral support for the course description guide. It is really amazing, and I know Dr. Mullin did a really good job, and Mrs. Henry too, around what we offer. And just when you look at other schools and what they offer, ours, it looks like, to me, it always looks like, like a college course description guide, the number of things you can take and really have an interest in, which is really hard for some of our students because they want to take all of it, and it's trying to slow down that, that desire because they've got lots of, lots of years to learn instead of packing your schedule. We have many students pack their schedule with lots of great courses. So, I just want to say thank you because I know that, you know, a little, a little secret behind this magic is that typically, the course description guide is probably still wet if it was a paper copy because it really is making changes and trying to get ready for this board meeting so it can be presented and approved by the board. Because it is December, and we're talking about courses that we hope to offer and run in, in September, right? So, we're about a year away, and we're still running. So, thank you for all the hard work, and Lisa, if you can bring it back to all the department chairs because I know everybody puts a lot of work into it. So, thank you.
And the support of Jim's Office, the directors, it's been, it always is a fun project to, to dream and see what we can make happen for kids.
Great collaborative effort, and thanks to Kristin and Charlie Boobin here tonight. That is a great show of support, and we appreciate it when we see it as well. And so, thank you for coming out tonight, a nice winter day, and showing us your stuff. But it looks wonderful, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes special reports.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
You're welcome.
All right. Visitor, let's see, visitor speaking, okay, we have a visitor tonight. Time is provided within the agenda for residents to bring concerns and comments to the board. Comments should not be related to any particular individual or to the specifics of negotiations since it is not proper for the board to discuss these issues in public session. A request to speak comment form must be filled out prior to the start of the citizens' comment period and given to the district clerk. It is expected that speakers will limit their comments to five minutes or less. The board reserves the right to limit the total amount of time spent on citizens' comment period based on the length of the agenda. Written communication to the Board of Education is encouraged as well. So, Mary Ann Lapala?
Lapala.
Lapala, I apologize. And if you would state your address as well, please.
I will. Twenty-eight Random Notes Drive. Thank you for giving me some of your time this evening. I was a school nurse in Webster Central School District for over 20 years. I've been an RN working in surgery and hospitals on and off since 1978. I'm a member of Take Action Rock. We are informing local school boards about bills that are coming up on the legislative level, that are impacting parental rights, medical freedom, and our children's ability to go to school. What are these bills? If you look at the, the bigger packet that I had given you, the first one refers to the HPV shot, Gardasil, mandatory for all children born after January 1st, 2009, or those, generally, those entering seventh grade to attend school. The next one is the flu shot for all daycare and all school attendance. The next two are, healthcare practitioner has the right to give a child a vaccine without the parent's consent or even knowledge that a vaccine was given. Parents are being taken completely out of the question. A school nurse could be given the authority to inject a vaccine into any child and never make a parent aware of it. This is currently happening in some Rochester City schools. The last one would make it so that any medical exemption written by a doctor would have to get approval from the Department of Health. Essentially, a doctor's word and expertise and knowledge of his or her pediatric patient is no longer trusted by the state. This situation happened in Buffalo, and the family had to go to court to fight for the child to be able to go back to school. The child is back in school now, but we don't know for how long. This doctor, this family is under scrutiny from the State Health Department, who is unwilling to trust the child's doctor, that the child could be severely harmed or even die if vaccinated, as he has a severe neurological disorder. A couple of things I think that are important to note about these bills. HPV Gardasil is not a communicable infection that can be spread in school. HPV, which stands for Human Papillomavirus, is an STD. It's spread through sexual content, contact. Children cannot spread HPV in school settings, and generally, this virus clears the body within two years with no harm. Worst-case scenario, the virus could possibly cause cervical cancer that typically occurs in middle-aged women. Regular pap smears are used for early detection of cervical cancer. But yet, our state lawmakers want to require that all children, girls, and boys, have to get this shot to receive a free and appropriate public education. Gardasil, which is the vaccine for HPV, is a three-series shot. It's been known to cause some very serious side effects. As of this past July, there have been over 62,000 reported adverse effects, including 510 deaths, 15,000 emergency room visits, 6,300 hospitalizations, and 3,000 permanent disabilities related to the HPV shot alone. This is according to the Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting System, also known as VAERS. Several countries, including Japan, France, and India, have banned the HPV shot from their, using their countries because they saw the detrimental effect it was having on their children, and they halted their programs. The flu vaccine has a track record for being one of the most dangerous vaccines on the market, also causing serious reactions and death. You may recall in the news last year, Senator Jose Peralta, who died three weeks after receiving the flu shot. He was 47. The flu vaccine has a varied and oft-troal effective rate. Last year, according to the CDC, the shot was 29% effective. This year, it is predicted, predicted to be even less. I believe it is less than 10%. While some parents may want their children to have this shot, this is still a decision that should be left up to the parents and the pediatricians, not lawmakers. I think it is important to note that these bills could pass as early as January 8th. That's less than one month from now. When the religious exemption was repealed this past June, it took one day for legislators to vote on it, and within hours, the bill was on Governor Cuomo's desk and signed into law. One day. Take Action Rock was told recently by Assemblyman David Di Pietro that 900 bills were passed last legislative session, and Governor Cuomo signed every one of them. Normally, 70 to 80 bills might be passed and signed. That indicates that there's truly a balance in government. What I have just told you proves otherwise. There are a lot of parents who are in support of vaccines and have their children completely up to date on their shots. They have decided, but they have decided to decline the flu and HPV. There is much greater opposition to these vaccines than others currently on the mandatory schedule. What happens if they're mandated? We may see many students, parents pulling their kids from school and homeschooling them rather than complying with what is an unconstitutional law. Won't this have a detrimental effect on the district? Doesn't the number of children enrolled in the district affect the amount of funds you receive? How will you provide services to children with special needs and IEPs when they're forced out of school and they are still entitled to these services? Albany and the Department of Health owes you an answer to these questions before they pass these bills. This is a big deal, and we need to take it seriously. We're asking school boards and school board district leadership to join our fight and take a stand in Albany. Several school boards have written Albany to show their opposition to these bills, and I've attached these letters to the packet that I gave you. We would love to see Penfield Central School District take a stand and support parental freedom regarding these bills. Please help us preserve the right to make decisions for our own children's health. And in turn, on a practical level, you will be preserving your enrollment numbers, which protects the budget, protects the jobs of our school workers, and it keeps our kids in school. And truly, on a much bigger level, if it is forced, are we free? If we cannot make decisions about our own bodies, then I would say no. For every freedom we give away, it will be easier and easier to continue to take more. Too many veterans have fought and been injured or died trying to preserve the freedoms we have, the freedoms we take for granted, but we know that freedom is not free. And we must remain ever vigilant to preserve our freedoms. Just to note, there is an extra flyer that I gave you because, as I stated before, there were 900 bills that passed this last year, and it, we've changed our flyers three times, and it's still not up to date because there's so many bills coming from New York legislators. You may be aware of the two that are on there. They would mandate sexuality education for all children, kindergarten through 12th grade. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, Ms. Lapala?
Yes.
We normally limit this to five minutes, and you've taken a little more time than that, which is fine. But I'm asking if you would please wrap it up because we have a long agenda tonight.
I have three, I have two sentences. Thank you for your time. If anyone has questions, I've left my email address and phone number on the first page of the packet, on the back page, actually. And I would welcome any questions if you have them. Thank you.
We don't take questions. It's, when we have visitor speaking time, it's an opportunity for you to come and tell us how you're feeling, and we appreciate that you've done that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Student rep, Livia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lot of things happening at Penfield School, Central School Districts with the holidays, so I've got a long report tonight.
She's gonna, she's gonna do it again.
I plan, I planned ahead. I only have one.
Okay, very good.
So, at Harris Hill, our kindergarten students put on a Thanksgiving performance for their friends and families with songs and creative turkey headbands. Students had a treat from the U of R a cappella group. They came to teach the fifth graders how to beatbox. Harris Hill will have their winter concert this Thursday, December 12th, at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. At Indian Landing, kindergarten classes also celebrated Thanksgiving by enjoying their own homemade applesauce. Fourth graders visited Dayton's Corners and were able to experience learning in the one-room schoolhouse, something that I had lots of fun with. Indian Landing will hold their winter concert next, Wednesday, the 18th, at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Cobble's will hold their winter concert tomorrow at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Scribner kindergarten students and their fifth-grade buddies enjoyed their annual fall feast together, celebrated Thanksgiving. The talented cast of the Scribner play, The Most Epic Birthday Party Ever, put on an amazing show this past weekend. Scribner is holding their winter concert right now as we speak, so if you're not doing anything after this, check that out. Home and Careers in Bay Trail made their own pies to bring home to share with their families for the holidays. This past week, they had their Mix It Up and Make a Difference Day, where students in their lunch periods got together to make positive posters, cards for soldiers, donation projects, and so many more good ways to give back to the community. The Bay Trail held all three of their winter concerts already last week. At Penfield High School, Drama Club put on an excellent play of Born Yesterday. A number of students attended Rock to Change Student Summer, Student Summit on Race, held by the Pittsburgh Schools, and there were students from over 40 different schools across Monroe County. PHS and Bastards Club is collecting Giving Tree donations in the spirit of holiday seasons. So, stop by the PHS counseling office to make a donation to help Penfield families in need. PHS physics students enjoyed a trip to the U of R Institute of Optics, engaging in hands-on activities and learning about various jobs in the field of physics. Winter sports seasons have started with boys and girls basketball teams defeating Fairport in their first few games of the season, and boys hockey also beginning. PHS Junior Winter Concert was held last night here with Philharmonia Concert Band and Chorus, and the PHS Senior Winter Concert will be held next Tuesday, December 17th, at 7:30 in the high school auditorium. And that concludes my report.
Wow, there is so much going on.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Any questions or comments for Livia? Informative as always, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much. Superintendent's report.
Let me get to it. So, we have, I, I literally have one student in staff honor, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sansucci, who will give us our budget forecast and reserve plan. And then, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pfeifer, who will talk about our instructional data summary because the state finally lifted that embargo, and so we can share some information. I just wanted to point out the SEPTA Book Fair, which took place this past Saturday at the Barnes &amp; Noble. We had SEPTA here at the last meeting, inviting everybody there. It was a great event. This is a picture of Mr. Herschler reading to some students, and, and I think I took that picture. And I was there as well, and it was a lot of fun, a great time. I did hear that they tentatively hit their mark. They raised a lot of money for SEPTA. So, it's a great opportunity. Once again, they put on a great, a great day. And to see principals and teachers and students from across the district coming in, it was really cool. So, that's my one update for, for today, and I turn it over to Dr. Sansucci.
Thank you. So, tonight, we start, tonight is the last of the sort of prequel presentations in our budget cycle, so. Thank you. So, you know, to date, we've had presentations by Ray Wagler discussing the audit and how we did last year. We've talked about tax gap and, and some forecasting around that. We've looked at enrollment projections, and tonight, we take a look at the comptroller's judgment of Penfield and some of our neighbors around fiscal stress. We look at our reserves, and we do a little bit of budget forecasting. So, the idea here is that, you know, we're, as we're moving into the budget cycle, we're looking at, you know, where we've been, where we are as we begin to look forward with the budget into the future, and, and what we want to do and what we need to budget for as we move forward. So, the board's adopted some goals, some guidelines. We know we have some marks we need to hit as we, as we move through. So, we start then tonight's conversation with fiscal stress, which is, how are we? We know from our audit, and I, and you heard the auditor say that our condition was sound and that we're in, in good shape. This is the, the, this is the comptroller's analysis of Penfield, and he takes a look at certain sort of easily available markers of potential stress in a school district. And so, we take a look at that. We do a little, we'll take a look at a little bit of budget forecast and then review our reserves. So, what do we have in terms of our savings for designated purposes as we move into the process? So, I think the important thing and the purpose of this slide is this idea that fiscal stress is a little bit like health. We all have health. It might be good or it might be bad, but nobody doesn't have it. And so, fiscal stress is a little bit of the same thing. It's a continuum, and we're all somewhere on the continuum. So, then, the question is, where are we at on that continuum as we move along? So. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sort of proud of that. The, and there are a number of ways that you can measure fiscal stress. So, the, the idea of cash solvency, do you have enough cash to, to pay your bills, you know, in the next few days? Am I living paycheck to paycheck? Budget solvency, in terms of a school, you know our revenues have to equal our expenditures. So, is that happening, or do we have a shortfall somewhere in our budget? Do we have long-run solvency, sort of an idea of looking into the future? That can we, can we meet the obligations that we have? Long-term obligation, bonds, contractual agreements, and so on, not just in 30 or 60 days, but out into the future. And then, service-level solvency, can we continue to provide the level and quality of services desired? And really, for Penfield, for us, and we really talk about this in our, our Goals, Assumptions, and Guidelines, it's this idea of service-level solvency. So, we have a, an instructional program that is well-regarded and that the community values and supports, and supports with their tax dollars and their votes every year. Can we continue to provide that? And we see what happens around us and throughout the state when schools get into fiscal stress, that it's that service-level solvency that, that really begins to cause the first problems. You know, the cuts. You know, the cuts that have to be made, reductions, staffing changes, program reductions and so on, in order to get financially healthy result in the district perhaps not providing the level of service that the community desires. And there's, you know, we have a good local example going on right now. So that's what we attend to and that's what we really need to look at as we move forward. So how are we doing? There's lots of ways to measure it, but the comptroller's picked twelve, twelve indicators. Six environmental indicators and six financial indicators. They're chosen not because they're perhaps the best indicators that could ever be found. Rather, they were chosen because they, they, first of all, they say something about the, the potential stress that a district might be under. But also they're easily available. The comptroller can get his hands on them. It's public reporting. It doesn't require any additional work. So it's a manageable system from, from their regard. So let's take a look then at how we do. I apologize for the sort of small size of these, but you also have them in your packet. So we'll start with the environmental indicators. Percentage of economically disadvantaged students. And this data is a little bit, a little bit aged as of this point, so we're looking at 2017 data. Because again, it's public reporting, what the comptroller can, can easily get. So percentage, and I'm comparing us, I've included our other Monroe County districts. So you can see in terms of stress by, in terms of economically disadvantaged students, we know we have students and families in stress. But relative to our peers, we have a smaller percentage. Common class, common branch class sizes, I'll come back to that. You can see we're pretty much in the hunt. Teacher turnover rate at the lower end, change in property value. The idea here that higher would be better, of course, that as, as property values increase and new construction comes into a community that, that while that might be good, it could also cause financial, it could cause stress, new students, new needs, new pressures and so on. And you can see here, we're, we're pretty much at the county median. Budget approval percentage for Penfield has, is and remains high. And our percentage of English language learners, which was another indication of potential stresses in the system, is, is fairly modest. So the financial, the, the, the environmental indicators are relatively low. I'll get to a, I'll show you in a moment, the, no, I guess I don't, I don't think I have a slide on this. I don't show you the projection in your packet. This was the, from the comptroller's reporting based on 2017. Every year for the report that you have, we try and make a guess as to what it'll be in the future. We take more current data. This would result in zero, in a score of zero for environmental stress in the comptroller's reporting. Our estimate shows a, a, a score of ten points actually for environmental stress that having to do with class sizes. So as you know, our class sizes have crapped up. And when common core, the common area, the elementary class sizes reach about twenty-four points, they start to, twenty-four students, I'm sorry, they start to assign points. So we know what's going on there. That shouldn't be a surprise to the board. We know that we have a space issue and an elementary school growth pattern. So we have a, a capital project in place now to deal with that. We're, it's not a surprise, but we're going to see that, I think, in a future. When, when the data finally catches up to our reality, they'll see, we'll see that in a future report. Financial indicators. Assigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. We're about in the middle of the pack. Total fund balance over expenditures, again, higher fund balance over expenditures as a proportion of that. Result is a more fin, less financial, less stress, I would say. Students with lower fund balances at greater risk of fiscal stress. Number of operating districts, operate, I'm sorry, number of operating deficits in the budget over the last four years. None in Penfield. Cash and short-term investments as a percentage of current liabilities. We are, because of our capital reserve at this point and sort of the ebb and flow of that, higher in cash because we haven't spent that on the projects that's being saved for. So we are, are at the higher end of the pack for cash as a percentage of net liabilities and cash as a percentage of, oh, I think I stuck the same one in twice. I did, I apologize. Same one in twice. Cash as a percentage of short-term and net liabilities. So where are we at then in terms of this? Ten points, oh, that says zero, but that should be ten points for environmental, zero for fiscal. But from the comptroller's perspective, fiscal stress doesn't even really start or, and doesn't consider a, a district to be susceptible to stress until twenty-five points. So we're not even half of that and moderate fiscal stress begins at forty-five points. And we know that our ten points has a plan in place to address. But the, the, the concern about that or the challenge in that, I think, is that, and it's a, the, the class size points are a perfect example of this. This is a backwards-looking measure. They take data, in this case from 2017, and they use it to make a judgment about fiscal stress. By the time it shows fiscal stress, probably it's already telling you something you already know, right? That you, essentially if you're driving off the cliff, your wheels have left the ground and it will announce that you're in stress. It's not forward-looking. It tells you what you should be paying attention to, but it doesn't give you something to, to, to give you an early warning system. So, and, and for us at least, that, I think the great example of that's the, the, the class size. If we were depending on this to, to say that we had stress around class size in the elementary schools, we're still fine. We're still fine. We'll probably be fine for two years until those numbers catch up. By then, we'll have addressed it. So we need a system that looks forward. And for us, this board and, and prior boards have always stressed this idea around service level solvency, that we're going to continue a commitment to financial planning. That it'll balance, this idea of balancing the needs of, of all the stakeholders here, of students, of maintaining programs, maintaining our facilities. Remembering that the, that taxes paid by our community support this in the majority. And that we balance those needs and look forward in a five-year plan annually as we, as we put our, our budget together. And for us, that means paying attention as we move forward to staffing and to salaries and to benefits. Seventy-five, seventy-four percent of our budget is driven by salary and benefits. Everything else, all the other things we talk about, debt service and textbooks and pencils and everything is, is really only about a quarter of our budget. Compared to a revenue picture where sixty-five percent of our budget is driven by, by the real property tax. State aid plays an important part of our, of that picture at about twenty-eight percent and then everything else. Everything from lost book fees to appropriated fund balance and so forth, seven percent of the budget. So it's that, that gap, that balance between a budget imbalance where the majority of the budget driven by salaries and a smaller component of the budget, sixty-five percent driven by the real property tax cap. The tax cap somewhat less out of our control than it has been in the past. It's the piece that we have the most control over. We don't have any control over state aid. We're recipients of state aid. The state, we have some influence, right? We can lobby, but the state makes determinations about what its level of available funding is for that. And in the past, I would say, and the, the revenue of last resort is what we then need to balance the program that the community desires. But the tax caps change that, right? It's changed that dynamic. We still have control over that. But the, but the scale has a thumb on it. Once you begin to move over the allowable levy limit. Not impossible, but difficult. I include this slide just to show what our history around that has been and it's been a responsible one. Over twelve years, we're at two percent. There were years where that levy increase was higher and years where it was lower. But prior to the two percent, we were at two percent. So I think that's been a, a history of responsibility. But, but obviously, as we move forward and potentially this year into difficult times, it's going to get harder and harder to maintain that balance. So tax-based growth factor, we talked about this at the last meeting, just an important component. And you can see that we are growing in terms of brick and mortar in the community, greater than the, greater than the, the county average. Eight point two percent for this year, about one point seven percent, we still don't know this yet, rate of inflation and that allowable levy growth factor. You cook all those things in, along estimated increases into a five-year plan of salaries and benefits. Again, they're just estimates, but they're estimates informed as best we know how to make them. We look at what we know and we, and we look at a five-year plan into the future. And you see, at least for the near future, that we will not be in deficit, that our, we are, our finances are robust enough that as things ratchet up, assuming modest state aid increases, that we don't begin to run a deficit for four years. And it's tiny at that point and bigger in the fifth year out. That's a moving target. As we know, we recalculate this every year and, and as things change, it's been pushed out further and pushed out closer. It's looked worse in some years than in others. But it's that idea that we're paying attention to where we're at, we're looking forward and understanding what it is that drives the, the, the the finances really drives the fiscal health of our school district. I'm not going to go through this, but there's a, a section in the PowerPoint and in your package that talks about this idea of surplus and why we'd have one. I think there's the idea that schools should never run one, that we, that a budget that ends in, in a surplus is somehow amiss. And we have several pieces here that show that that's in fact not the case. You know, as by law, we cannot run a deficit. We are not the state of New York. We're not the federal government. We must remain in balance. Which means necessarily some conservative budgeting, maintenance of reserves and, and a look at the future. So those pieces are an important part of responsible financial planning. It's how you manage them as you go along that makes sense. That makes, that makes it make sense, that makes it responsible. So this is just a quick slide of, of what, what that looks like kind of in scale, because I think that's important. The green bar expenditures, the red bar revenue, the blue line budget. And you can see how that operating surplus ebbs and flows is greater in some years, lesser in others. As we, as our budget works to provide the services that we need to provide. The question then is, how do you manage the reserves or that additional surplus as you go from year to year? Overall, our variance runs around six percent before capital project expenditures and one percent after. So over the course of the last five years, it's at just about one percent. You can see it's been higher in some years than others. But one, about one percent of the budget is, is where we're at. It's that six percent budget number that we've been using as our target. So we're at six percent, six point six percent. And we've determined, let me see if I have a slide, that we would like to be at about five. So the state law for towns allows for a ten percent, a ten percent contingency that they can build into their budget. There's no formal guidance for schools. Our, our auditor has said that it should be proportional to what we appropriate every year for fund balance, which would be about two and a half, two to two and a half percent. So that target of two and a half to five is where we've settled. Five percent's our target. And I think this year, as we squeeze forward into what I think is going to be a difficult revenue year, will, I expect we'll be dropping closer and closer to that as we, as we manage through. I've got several slides here on the comptroller's view of reserves versus the district's view. I'm not going to go through them. This will be posted online and you have it in your packet as well. But just suffice it to say that we're in alignment. I know comptroller's audits are often critical of reserves in school districts. They looked at ours a number of years ago and, and made suggestions. But their fundamental, I think, belief around the importance of reserves aligns with ours. They understand the need of them. They just have a process question. They want to make sure that they're done appropriately, correctly. I do think they make some political judgments honestly around levels. I think they're making stuff up as they go along in some cases because they're implying law that doesn't exist, but, but I don't think they're ill-intended. I also include here some, the definitions of what they can be used for of the reserves that we maintain. So capital reserves are for, are for large and expensive items. So we maintain a bus purchase reserve and a capital reserve that we use for building construction projects. So we use it to offset the local share of, of budget, of budgeted capital projects. As you know, that's the single largest fifty, about fifty-eight percent or so of our reserves are in these two capital reserves. So we use, we use the bus purchase reserve to stabilize the amount to taxpayers as the number of buses purchased go up and down. And the capital reserve to offset that local share that state aid doesn't fund when we do construction on our buildings. Insurance reserve, this was one of the reserves that the comptroller commented on and it was reduced a number of years ago as a result of that in 2016 to $500,000. We hold that against claims not covered by insurance policies, a very small unemployment insurance reserve and a workers' compensation reserve. I'll go through these in a bit, a bit more. I'm not going to read through these. At this point, it's in your packet. I'll go over it when we, when we get to the levels and funding levels of the reserves. So tax surgiore for, just so we all have the same language, for claims against the school district for over-assessment. Employee benefits accrued liability, that's a reserve for money we owe people that they've already earned essentially. So if we have one small unit that, that can, can accumulate time based on sick days towards retirement, towards a retirement payment. And so as the, we move along, we adjust that reserve for that obligation. An employee retirement contribution reserve, that's to assist the district in evening out the ebbs and flows of the employees' retirement system costs. Oh, and I didn't include what I should have. It's, it's in your documentation. A teacher's retirement system reserve that the board has established. That was authorized last year by the legislature and the board adopted the language to create it. It hasn't been funded yet. So here we are with regard to our levels of funding in each of those reserves. So there are, there's three slides here. I'll go through them fairly quickly. But essentially, these show the, the balance at June of eighteen, the, the interest earned on the reserve, the uses of the reserve, so expenditures from the reserve and transfers into the reserve. So last year, we had overall about $331,000 of expenses from those reserves and transferred in primarily to the capital reserve. Well, really almost split equally between tax surgiore as we have had an increase in the number of claims against the district for, for those commercial properties wanting tax reductions. And capital reserve as we build towards our, our next plan in terms of capital construction. Debt service fund is interest earned on prior capital projects that, that we use to support debt as part of our financial planning. as part of our financial planning. So it needs to be used to spend down that debt, the existing debt, the debt from the project that generated in the first instance. For us, that's the big capital project that's now sort of a distant memory. And so we use it to offset local share as we initiate new bonding issues. So there was, and we also transfer into it our debt service and pay our debt service out of there. So that's the in and out you see in that fund. And finally, although they're not reserves, they're an important part of the financial picture, unassigned fund balance and assigned appropriated fund balance. So the assigned appropriated is what we've used as a revenue essentially in the upcoming year against taxes. This is what that looks like in terms of a pie. So the bus purchase reserves, the dark blue to the left, and the capital reserve, the purple color at the bottom, so 63% overall of our reserves are for those capital purposes. The remainder of the slides show our recommendations as to how we should approach this as we move forward into this next years. Some of it will be done over the course of this year, some will take a bit longer. The workers' compensation reserve was established when workers' compensation fund was in deficit. It's begun, I think completed its climb out. It's been getting healthier over the course of the last couple of years. You'll recall that that's a consortium, a workers' compensation consortium, and went into deficit when we went back and re-looked at some outstanding cases and really decided as a school community that we needed to, as part of best practice, par those up to more appropriate reserve levels. So we've been working our way back out of that. It's the, that is, that has, that fund is now healthy. So I think we should begin to consider spending down the workers' compensation reserve. So how we do that, we really have two choices, and we'll work that out as we move through this budget process, I think. Either use it in, over a number of years, in support of our worker compensation bill and pay it down that way, or liquidate it in its entirety, and we can use it as part of funding of either a new reserve for a capital project as we spend this one. Sort of depends on how, a little bit on moving parts, is our history of what the near future looks like in terms of capital project, and what this budget cycle looks like. But it gives us at least those two options. Bus purchase reserve, I think we're in fine shape. If we continue on our path, that will work. I've, in the past, talked about an idea of, we've sort of got a lockstep process for use of that reserve. And I think we should consider perhaps revising that plan a little bit to make it a little more flexible to sort of adjust against the tax cap. But that would be optional to us, and it gives us an option this year also, depending on how the revenue picture looks, to draw deeper into bus reserves in support of the budget, should we have to do that. ERS reserves, we've been using a little bit in each of the years. That'll remain an option. It's really, we'll have, it's really been designed for significant increases in retirement contributions. This year's was greater than it has been. Oh, I'm sorry, ERS, I apologize. ERS reserves did not increase for this year. TRS did, and we don't have the TRS reserve funded. But, well, so I recommend monitoring and holding that for its planned use when I think ERS begins to spike as well. We should begin funding. It's a five-year plan or a five-year program to fund that TRS reserve. And really, we should begin to do that. Debt service, we planning on using that. We, as you know, we had included a portion of that plan as part of the capital project that we initially introduced that included a replacement bus garage. It was a much bigger project, and we had a dip into the debt service fund to manage that debt, and then that unwound. So we'll be back to that again, I think, as we move forward into the BCS project. Hopefully, as we continue to look for space for a new bus garage to include that, and I'd expect to use debt service funds in support of that. Let's see, insurance reserve remains stable, and capital reserve, we've been building that up. We need to finish and complete funding that reserve. We targeted approximately $20 million towards that BCS bus garage project, so we're nearly there, and should continue on that path. Oops, that's it. So I apologize, that was long, but I also went kind of fast, because there's a lot of stuff here. So you have a much more comprehensive document. I'm happy to answer any questions. Is there anything I went too fast on or didn't cover?
Boyd, you first. Any questions, Collins? Mark?
Yeah, we've got a couple of questions tied to the TRS reserve.
Yes.
Which you said was going to do.
Yes.
Can you recap why they've authorized that?
Yeah, essentially, that was created as part of last year's budget deal. Well, along with lots and lots and lots of other legislation, right? Most legislation in New York happens in those last couple of days of session. So when they initially established the employees, the ERS reserve, you know, its purpose is to allow municipalities, which includes schools, we're a municipality, but towns, villages, the teacher, the employees' retirement system had fallen, district, I'm sorry, municipal contributions, the required contributions had fallen to almost zero, and then they skyrocketed. And there was no way for districts to plan for that. Now, I keep saying districts, but really, the focus in that legislation was on municipalities. Because while we have ERS employees, most of our employees are teacher retirement system employees. So when they passed, after that debacle and the stress that it caused municipalities, they authorized legislation to allow all of those municipalities to create a reserve to help buffer those changes. They didn't pass the same legislation for teachers' retirement. And that, partly in oversight, I think, but the focus at that time was on towns, villages, and so on, and we came along for the ride. There's been a, and it has been since that legislation was passed, it's been a priority of school boards to say, wait a minute, you know, that's great, but we have the same problem. Teachers' retirement has the same dynamics, it's the same, self-same thing, but you haven't authorized us to be able to do the same thing for teachers. And so, you know, those bills were introduced every year and just never made it, for whatever reason, it never happened. It's not clear to me exactly on why the stars aligned last year, but they did, and so the legislature authorized it.
So along those lines, you said you had, you're looking at a five-year plan for funding it.
Right.
And now looking, obviously, this is looking forward to the performance of the TRS system and the economy and all that.
Right.
Do you think that the five years is at a period of time?
Well, it doesn't matter, because it's statutory. We could, we can choose not to fund it, we could fund it at lower levels, but it's, but essentially, the legislation itself caps the amount that a district can put in to 10% at 2% per year for five years. And I should say, 2% of teachers' salaries eligible for retirement, of the retirement cost. So, you know, the idea there, I think, or the rationale behind that, because, you know, many of the reserves don't have that kind of guidance associated with them. But increases over 2% are a, potentially, an exemption to the tax cap. So you can add to your levy to accommodate changes in the TRS rate of more than 2%. So that leaves that bottom two, which can be a lot of money, with nothing to cover it. And other than potentially program reductions, or, you know, it has to fit in under the cap. So I think the idea was, if you can put in that 2% over five years, that gives you 10 to manage through sort of a cycle of that. I, you know, it's not completely unthoughtful, you know what I mean? It was, it seems rational to me.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, good.
Turn it over to Mr. Piper.
Thank you, Dr. Button. So as the board will recall, we discussed the results of the three through eight assessments in our September meeting. It used to be that this was one gigantic report that was given. I think Catherine will remember, Barb might remember, Mark, I don't know if you were on board yet, when we did everything three through eight, and it was usually the October meeting before we started the school action plans. And while that was fun, did make for a long meeting. And then with changes in when data became available, and now embargo, so that the state can release the region's data along with the New York State report cards, that's changed our timeline a little bit. And it's a little bit frustrating, because I think it would make more sense for you to have this kind of background information as you're leading into the school action plans, and be able to consider that along with what you're hearing from our principals. But it doesn't allow for that, but it's still important for us to discuss it, even though the teachers and administrators have been acting on this information really since summer. So we'll run through it. Just remember, we're looking back now at the '18-'19 school year, so some of this is fairly dated information now, as we're fully a third of the way through the '19-'20 school year. But just some district statistics for you from the '18-'19 school year and what we were looking at back then. Not much has changed, although our enrollment has gone up. Our mission statement is the same as what it is for this year and has been for the past several years, and as the principals said and others have said, thank you for keeping things consistent for us. We see that also with our first goal from that year, which we were striving to achieve. Just some kind of different levels of view of how we use data in the district and things that we're doing. So when we're thinking about student achievement at the center during the '18-'19 school year, thinking about what drove that work, the learning standards, our curriculum development, our instruction, our assessment, the resulting data, information that we get from APPR and our observations of our teachers, leading to professional development, and then the cycle starts again. At the school level, looking at improving student outcomes through screening measures and progress monitoring throughout the school year. Our teachers are using data and evidence-based practices in their classrooms, and really having that whole student view on what's happening in their classroom, and what are the multi-tiers of intervention and systems and supports that we can put into place to support them. At the classroom level, what are our teachers really doing? Well, based on the curricula that they write, they're then planning, they're implementing those plans, they're assessing how the students did with those plans, evaluating what to do next, and again, starting the cycle over and over again on a daily basis. These are not new. You saw these over the course of the '18-'19 school year. Thank you to Nancy for always helping me get these back in order, as I have to pull them out for this report, because I'm just not organized enough to collect them along the way. So I always get them back from Nancy. But thinking about our Newsweek magazine honors, NAM honors, our recognitions in Business First and the ratings of our districts as a result during the '18-'19 school year, our recognition by New York State under ESSA, and then our graduation results in our region's diplomas, and you'll see this data in the full packet that you get. You get the full report with the three through eight data, the region's trend data, and some SAT data is in there as well. This is always a good one, I think, to look at, to really comparatively look at ourselves against New York State, when you look at the way our students perform as compared to New York State on college, still widely considered college entrance-type exams in terms of the SAT and ACT, although the SAT seems to be falling off in favor. But what really stood out to me this year was looking at the composite ACT score. When you look at that 27.2, that's out of a 36, is a perfect score on the ACT. So you look at that, if, when you look at that trend data continuing to trend upward, as is New York State as a whole, but we're still outpacing New York State, especially in that ACT, which is becoming a more popular exam for college entrance as opposed to the SAT. So I was really impressed with that when I was looking at that stat in particular. This is a summary of our region's exams results from last school year. This isn't the trend data. The trend data, you have, I think, include 10-year trends in the full report that you have access to. And you'll note the difference. When we're looking at the newer exams, you have passing proficiency and mastery versus the older exams that haven't been updated yet are only passing and mastery. So those common coreline exams, that CC designation is, but also now global history is in there. We'll have the science exams and the other social studies exams coming onboard in the next few years, and we'll talk a little bit more about that coming forward. Again, that trend data around the ACT scores, the composite scores there is what I mentioned. So continuing that general upward trend and getting closer to that perfect score of a 36, which is outstanding, although I did, when I was looking at that, there was a school district that had 10 students score perfect. I didn't look to see where it was, but just caught the headline, 10 kids get a perfect score on an SAT. That's pretty incredible. SAT results, just a reminder that we lived through the shift. I think for many of us, we probably took an SAT out of 1,600, then for a while, it shifted up to 2,400 points. And then, as you see there, it notes back in 2016, it dropped back down to the 1,600 was the highest score you could get. So that drastic dip there from 16 to 17, we've got the triple asterisk to note, that's not a performance issue with our students. That was a change in the total scoring that causes that big data drop there, but we keep that trend going to get that long look and see how our kids are doing comparatively there. Our diploma types, this still remains steady, 96, 97% graduation rates over the last three years, with anywhere, you know, 77% of our students with advanced designation are higher. So strong results in terms of the number of our students that are graduating and graduating with high levels of achievement. So again, not going through all the region's exams, just because of the number of them and looking at that trend data, that's something that you can have and look at, but we would be here for a really long time. What are the key findings that we see in looking with our departments and looking with the directors and the administrators on our data? Our trend data are stable. We don't have any major spikes, drop-offs, or major spikes upward. When we've got passing rates of 96, 97, 98, it's hard to have a spike upward, and we want to avoid those spikes downward. We certainly look at that. Comparatively, when we look at our results, excuse me, compared to our component districts, still very positive and competitive. We're not number one in a lot of them, but we're not also at the bottom. We tend to be in the middle to the upper middle of the pack in most rankings compared to our 10 component districts and BOSEs. And our kids are performing at a very high and competitive level across the board. So where are opportunities for improvement? This shouldn't be a shock. I don't know if I have to say it. But with changes coming, I mean, one thing that we continue to look at with the exams that have already been updated to be common coreline, we take a look at those exam results, interpret what the state means by those standards and expectations, go back and make our curricular instructional adjustments. With our assessments that have yet to be changed, you know, that's a bit of a guessing game. We're going to have some curriculum work to do, as you heard from Nicole Whitehead recently about science, the changes in the science standards. That work is now ongoing. We're beginning to implement those changes and phase them in, so that our students will be ready when the new science exams come. Focus on the changes that have resulted in instruction, because not only have the standards changed, but with the common core framework for, the C3 framework in social studies, and now the new science framework, what we're asking kids to do looks differently. It's not so much based on memorization of facts, but really exploration, explanation, research, digging in and getting into these things. So making sure that our instructional practices align to that, that we continue to look at our tiered system of interventions. You heard a presentation from Leslie with her school action plan around the new ASC here at the high school. So continuing that work at the secondary level to intervene and meet kids where they need to be met, to get them to where they need to be, we'll continue to focus on that as well. So our actions will be, as these new, our tests are coming out, we'll be continuing to write annually, as you've heard before, roughly $100,000 every year on curriculum writing projects. That will continue. Part of that work that I think is important to note will be our efforts to integrate the social-emotional learning standards and benchmarks from New York State, but also as our staff are going through our social justice training and learning about the social justice standards, aligning those to our curriculum development work as well, so we can have those ideal points for explicit and integrated instructions around social justice to address our SEL needs. That'll be happening as well. We continue to work on assessments. Assessments need to be efficient. They need to give us useful data for driving instruction, looking at our program and instruction in the short and long term. So we're continuing to look at ways to be more efficient in that, to be, to get the best data we can to move forward with our students. Also, we'll be continuing to look at professional development to do that, all of those things, and our five-year plan for social-emotional health and well-being, getting through and implementing those changes that we've talked about through that plan, which I hope to give the board an update on later in the spring. We'll hopefully see not only better mental health for our students, but then also see those improvements in academic performance as well. as well. And so the shift will continue to have an insured focus on learning, but that foundation will not just be built on those academic elements, but also those social emotional elements as well. And we'll continue to use data, professional development, and technology to support our work in that area. So for this year, this is, again, still our first goal, which we, again, appreciate and we're striving to reach that, and we'll continue working on that way. So what's next? You've heard from the directors. These are the pending changes to the assessments and things that are happening with us now. I did hear, I haven't been able to confirm it yet, but that there may be yet another change coming in the vendor for New York State three-through-eight assessments. We'll see. There is an RFP out for that, so that's public. So that's for sure. Whether or not it'll be granted to Questar again remains to be seen. But we have these new region's exams coming, even though we're hearing that the Board of Regions is going to look at region's exams as a practice as a whole in the future. That's out there as well, that they've got supposedly some work groups beginning to go to look at what needs to be in place in terms of assessments versus other ways to measure student readiness to graduate. So these changes are all upcoming. You've heard about these before. They'll keep driving our work and our need to continually revise our practice and our plans. So that was very quick. You've got a lot more information in your packet to mull over and take a look at, but I'm happy to do my best to answer any questions or jot them down so that I can provide answers later.
Board members?
I've been particularly happy to be able to see more of the assessments from my oldest son in the school this year. It's been very helpful for me and I think for him as well.
Great. Glad to hear that.
I didn't quite catch, what is it that they're putting out for RFP again?
The vendor that's for the three-through-eight assessments. So in the past, that had been Pearson, and then most recently, it's been Questar. So, you know, while New York State teachers and the Education Department are involved in the development, they do outsource a lot of that work to a vendor. And Questar then also manages the computer-based testing portion of that as well.
That's what I was going to ask, is that tied to the CBT?
Yep. Oh, yeah.
Testing issue.
Absolutely. Well, that would make sense. I don't know if the contract was up at this point and that's why the RFP is out, or if because of the ongoing concerns that we've had during the early portions of CBT, if that's driving it as well, remains to be seen.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you, Road Runner. That was quick. Appreciate your time and effort, gentlemen.
No problem.
And that concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. All right, board members, we're on item six under financial items. Approval of annual report reserve funding in use. Board policy 5630 requires that the Board of Education conduct an annual review of all reserve funds. In addition to this required review, this information is also included as part of the annual budget presentations during the budget process. Regular review of this important aspect of the district's finances is intended to ensure transparency of the process and to assist the board in making the necessary decisions to adequately fund all reserves, manage the fund balance, and ensure the overall budgetary integrity of the school district. This report, updated December 10, 2019, has been submitted for board review. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education hereby approves the annual reserve plan and the presented recommendations and directs that the recommendations for reserve use be incorporated into the 2020... 2021 budget planning process.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. 2019-2020 property tax collection status. As of November of each year, town tax collectors have finalized their property tax collections for the school levy and remitted all funds collected to the school district and submitted all unpaid bills to the county. Attached is the status of the Penfield Central School District Tax Levy authorized by the Board on August 13th. Additions and cancellations to the authorized levy and collections through November 30th, 2019. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 property tax collection status, including all additions and cancellations made to the original approved levy amount? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Donations. Donations totaling $15,273.17 for items in the 2019-2020 budget were received by the district schools as shown. RIT donation, High School Technology Department, $400. American Heart Association, Harris Hill Elementary, $700. Indian Landing Elementary PTO Arts in Education, $3,000. Indian Landing Elementary PTO Equipment, $1,198.85. Harris Hill Elementary PTA Arts in Education, $3,000. Harris Hill Elementary Book Fair Proceeds, $2,035.61. Scribner Elementary Book Fair Proceeds, $2,190.44. Bay Trail Middle School Book Fair Proceeds, $1,248.27. Family First Credit Union Arts in Education, $1,500. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $15,273.17 to the 2019-2020 budget as shown above, the amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items, and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield Schools and all Penfield parents, students, and staff for their support of this year's book fairs.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Jim.
I noticed that the Family First donation for arts and... As you know, Family First, that donation goes to the framing of the artworks and our partnership with Family First. That's increased from the past several years because they've agreed to allow us to select more works of art each year. So I believe it's going to be three or four additional works of art on top of what we're already selecting will be part of that selection process in June and framed and then provided. So I just wanted to mention that and call that out. I didn't notice that that was on here before, but we're continuing to be excited about that partnership and really appreciate them pitching in to increase the number of works that'll be framed and celebrated.
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
All right, we had the motion... We had the second, right? Any questions or comments other than Jim's? Okay, all those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Okay, policies for first read. Do you want to take that? Okay, thanks.
The policy committee has worked on... We talk a lot at the district level and the board level around the whole student. And so the policy committee wanted to sort of memorialize that in a policy. So you'll see, you have the document on board docs, which is going to be a brand-new policy, 8243 Whole Student. And it's just an overview of the dedication the district puts forth to the whole student and SEL. And so that's first read, and we'll talk about it at the next policy committee and be back hopefully at the next board meeting for a second read if there's any comments.
Okay, thank you. All right. PHS Course Description Guide. May I have a motion in a sec? Did I miss one?
Yeah.
What happened? Oh, thank you. Okay, there we go. Okay. Penfield's Medicaid Compliance Program must be certified annually by December 31st. The Board has reviewed the compliance program self-assessment tool developed by the Office of the Medicaid Inspector General. The document has been reviewed by the District Medicaid Compliance Committee, and no substantive changes have been made from prior years. Approval is recommended. May I have a motion in a second that the Board recertify the Medicaid Compliance Plan as presented above?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Now we can go to the Course Description Guide. May I have a motion in a second that the 2020-2021 Penfield High School Course Description Guide be approved as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Okay. Agreement with Penfield School Transportation Association. Proposed resolution that the Board approves the agreement between the Penfield School Transportation Association, the PSTA, and the Penfield School... Penfield Central School District effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2021. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Okay. We're on to MCSBA meetings. So Barb and Tom, you went to Labor Relations?
Well, I started out at Labor Relations and then I had to leave because I had a commitment to go to. The beginning part that I was there for was very, very, you know, informational about negotiations. And it's something that I've been through before. And then sadly, I had to leave, so I'm now going to turn it over to you.
So, yeah, I was there as well as Dr. Sansucci. And they had an attorney in to just talk about negotiations, the school board role in negotiations, the district role in negotiations. And I think it was informative. The minutes are up on the Monroe County School Board site. If you want to go and take a look, I believe they have the PowerPoint there as well.
Well, I also forwarded...
You did.
I did.
Yep. So while Barb had to leave early for an issue, she did send the minutes, which was wonderful.
Yes, she did.
All right, thanks. Information exchange. Emily, were you there? Anything to share?
I was not there. You're correct. I knew it would be in good hands with Emily.
They were just talking about Julie.
Oh, okay.
And it was very informative.
Yeah, be a little more up on, right? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Legislative, Mark and I were there, and we also went to Albany yesterday. We can talk about that in a minute. Oh, it's the next item there. Mark, is there anything? You want to start with that? I mean, you can just combine the two. They kind of go together anyway.
Right, especially this one because a lot of what it was about was preparing for the Albany trip.
Right.
And, you know, a good part of the legislative committee meeting is legislative meetings going on in the state and federal legislatures, legislative governments. So yesterday Catherine and I went to Albany. We took the normal bus trip with the Monroe County School Board Association. This is one of those times where because of the news, we had AMP 13 there when we left in the morning and then when they were there when we got back.
Yeah.
So they were doing all the things in the news with different districts that they wanted to talk to us. We met, we had several interviews with representatives from the chairs, education chairs of the Senate and the Assembly. We also met with the budget director and another person from the Ways and Means Committee, and then the Director of Ed Policy. The themes that we really went with to talk to them was that school spending, a lot of what more and more we do with school spending is not tied to education. It supports education, but it's really tied to social services. I mean, if you think about what we're doing and we talk about, you know, essentially social emotional learning, which we all agree is an important component, it is not, in the strictest sense, education. Well, I take that back. I mean, you know, there is... There's a part of it is and a part of it isn't. You know, wellness is not tied to that. So there's more and more that what we do is not, let's say, the classic education. And then we talk about safety and security. That's not education. So these are new costs, new asks that are happening to the district that historically may have been performed by other agencies. What we're basically saying is you gave us money for education in terms of foundation aid, and you'd want us to see we're spent on education, so would we. So how do we deal with that? And one of the ways to deal with that is to try to see, first of all, looking at how that money that we spend on these other programs, how that is tied into the tax cap. You know, when you look at the tax cap formula and we look at the kind of cost we'd have to spend for safety if we go to an SRO, can those kinds of things, can the formulas be tweaked? That's always an ask and that's always, you know, a challenge, but we have to keep hitting that theme. The other part of it is sources of revenue. You know, there are other organizations, other government agencies within the county and the town that get funding that's not under education, but it's under, you know, health service-type funding. We're providing a lot of those similar services. Can we have that funding accessible to us as well? So we have not just our normal educational source of funding, we have other sources of funding to help reduce the draw of the educational funding away from strict education. That was a big theme, and we're, you know, we're really trying to educate them on the increasing impact of that. The other... So the other part of that is tied, that we were talking about, was tied to things like the reporting that we have to do, the per-school reporting.
Yeah.
Actually, interesting enough, we found that this, the state is really not happy with that either. And they actually want to push back on that. So it really came from the legislature. You know, but they... The state really would say, there was some pushback on the state. I can't remember exactly which person said that. And they talked about, they expected to be a very busy year, the upcoming year. We thought that since this first year, as I mentioned earlier, approximately 600 bills that went through, did they expect that to be let up this year? And the answer is no. They expect to be as many. And even as it goes now, stands now, Cuomo has still not signed all of those bills. Now, he's not vetoed any of them. So to date, none of them have... They've all been in line with what he wants to do, so none of them have been vetoed, but he's still working through those. They expect the same thing next year. And we really try to emphasize, work with us, if you contact us through Monroe County School Board Association if they have things that are going on, so we can help them understand, avoid unintended consequences, understand how they would actually benefit us or how they might actually hinder us. And we'd be glad to work with them on these things early on. And then I think the final aspect of it is with fiscally, the state's, you know, you've got a deficit going on in the... And I think this is probably not a shock that we do expect things like the foundation aid increase to be pretty small in the upcoming year.
But at least they don't expect it to go, you know, go away or drop it mid-year or anything like that, so.
Right. They said, "Don't expect it." You're not going to have to worry about expecting a cut, but the increases can be very moderate. And I'm sure Mark probably through his own organizations has got a good sense, probably a better sense of that.
No surprise there, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah. On the whole, of course, it's always a good trip. We get those contacts, we have the messages out, and this is the time where when they're starting to formulate their policies and their plans for bills, either through the governor and the policies that go with the budget or the legislature, we can get these themes in their mind so they can understand what kinds of things are really important to us.
Right, exactly. A couple of things that I just, you know, a couple of things that I noticed. There was one of the staffers who met with us, and I can't remember the first one. Well, you weren't there. You went to a different one. And he walks in the room, and the first thing he tells us is, you know, you know, aid keeps going up year after year. And that's the first thing he said when he sat down. So I had to remind him with due respect that so do our expenses. And so do, you know, the expectations and like, you know, the promise of the funding that never comes. So, you know, I don't really appreciate that defensive posturing when we're there to have a conversation because we know what's happening. We're informed, but we don't need to have that little bit of attitude that was there. But when he... Sherry is so good at what she does. And when she starts talking to the people that we meet with, I'll bet he thought, he probably didn't even have to say that because we were a group that was there to share ideas and, you know, like you were saying, we do have the needs and whatnot, but we were not there to stir up anything. We were there to let them know we have this interest, we have this voice, we are here to let you know what we need and, speaking of unintended consequences, how things actually roll out versus what they may have intended in the first place. Sherry asked everybody about... Sherry asked everybody about the numerous bills that came about this past year, and will there be more this year? And they said, yeah. So it appears that there's going to be a lot more legislation coming up. The ones that have been vetoed, one of them told us that the easy ones, so to speak, have been taken care of. They've been either signed or vetoed. And the ones that he hasn't addressed, we were told they're difficult ones, and we don't know where they're going to go. So there was that to that. But one, a school district brought up a really interesting unintended consequence about the lunch bill, and I never considered this, but this one district is having trouble having anybody pay. So if there's a student that, you know, doesn't pay for their lunch, there's, and I know that was not what was intended when that legislation went through. So that's a great example of, you know, the best-laid plans and all that. So we had a good conversation about a lot of different things, and I agree, it was, it was a good trip. It's, that is a fast trip. It's a long day, but a fast trip, so, but I enjoyed it. I thought it was great. It was great camaraderie with our fellow school boards around the county, and it was a busy day, but it was good. All right. Anything else? Well, I guess not. All right. No unfinished business? No new business? May I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:51 PM?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you, and happy holidays, everyone.